Thirty P M on January twelfth, two thousand twenty.
Cool.
Oh, so we're going to discuss tonight, we're going to discuss item ID number twenty-two dash two nine nine. Review the twenty twenty-three downtown historic district fund program. Alrighty.
Good evening, Historical Preservation Board. I'm Scout Turnbach, a planner two, focusing on historical preservation within the city of Littleton. And tonight we'll be discussing, as Rick said, the downtown historic district fund for twenty twenty-three. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is actually to get your guys' feedback and direction on staff's proposed twenty twenty-three downtown historic district fund program. So as we go over, there have been some changes to the amounts and to the types of funding that are available in twenty twenty-three. And so we're looking at kind of a different funding program than we've had in previous years. And because it's different, because it's so new, and I'm so new to this position, I'm really hoping that you guys can provide some good feedbacks and solid feedback to really make this program successful for twenty twenty-three. So some background is the downtown historic district fund, previously the Main Street Historic District Fund, provides funding to property owners and tenants for projects that help preserve and sustain downtown Littleton's historic structures. There is an increase in funding in twenty twenty-three. This is an annual fund program. Twenty twenty-two funds were not dispersed, so there was fifty thousand dollars that were allocated to twenty twenty-two, which was a reduced amount from previous years because of the COVID nineteen pandemic. In twenty twenty-three, we're going to have a whopping five hundred thousand dollars. Those fifty thousand dollars from twenty twenty-two, they were actually rolled over, so we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in City of Littleton funds available in twenty twenty-three. That's being supplemented by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act funding, that's targeted to the downtown historic district. H P B is expected to review those applications in summer twenty twenty-three. And a little bit later in the slideshow, we're going to go over those proposed timelines, but our hope is that in the July or June H P B meeting, we'll actually have those grant applications for you guys to review, so you can determine who would be awarded those funds. For twenty twenty-three, to accommodate the increase in funding and the two different funding sources, we're looking at a two-tiered program. The first tier is much more traditional and much more akin to the previous year's funding we've had. It's reviewed and approved by H P B and it funds projects that impact the exteriors of historic buildings visible from the public radways. So anything that needs a major or minor, that counts as a major or minor alteration for which a certificate of appropriateness is required, would appear before the Historical Preservation Board so that they could review that grant application and make a final determination about whether or not that project should receive grant funding. Tier two would be reviewed and approved by staff, so these two-tiered, tier-two applications would not appear in front of the Historical Preservation Board. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, is that Andrea Mimna, the previous historical preservation planner in Littleton, approached you guys in May twenty twenty-two and discussed the possibility of having administratively-approved grant applications for some of the following items. Specifically urgent requests, my understanding is that this came from a storefront that had been destroyed when a car drove through it in downtown. So something that met that level of immediacy for the repairs that are needed would be funded through this tier-two program. Maintenance projects, including graffiti removal, but that are really focused on just maintaining the building, such as repairing windows, new coats of paint, especially for projects that are in disrepair, is something that would be approved through those tier-two. A D A accessibility improvements, which are really important to create an inclusive downtown, would also be funded through those tier-two, so long as they didn't need a certificate of appropriateness. And then interior improvements, such as new demising walls, making new spaces for tenants and accommodating new uses, would also go through this second tier. Those improvements, like all of the projects funded through the American Rescue Plan Act funds, ARPA funds, have to be linked to a business's recovery from the COVID nineteen pandemic. So interior improvements would have to be with the ultimate goal of helping the business recover from the negative effects of COVID nineteen.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, absolutely.
As far as that goes, I understand, you know, room dividers and things like that, but what if, if somebody made the argument, "Well, I have to like update my interior design to attract more customers, and that's how I'm going to recover from COVID." Is that an acceptable reason, or does it have to be more structural, like, you know, room dividers and sneeze guards?
My understanding is it doesn't have to be more structural. It really just depends on how solid their argument is, like, have they thought through how those improvements are actually going to help them recover? Have they done any analysis of how many more people it will attract? Have they shown that their business has been impacted by COVID nineteen, such that they need to attract further customers? Those are the kind of elements that I think we would be looking at for those sorts of improvements and those sorts of requests. But again, everything is pretty up in the air at this point, you know. To be completely sincere, this is my first time running a grant program, and so I'm more than welcome to anybody's suggestions.
Well, to Kim's point, you're talking about someone wants to gut an interior space, right?
Or just, you know, I want to spend a lot of money on, you know, updating it and making it hipper or something like that. It's still going to have the same fixtures and the same layout and all of that, but, you know, I'm going to go from, you know, red and green color scheme to blue or something like that, you know what I mean? It's just like, I need to update to...
That's aesthetic, but I'm thinking more in terms of just gutting the entire interior, which may have original historic fabric.
I have a question. So does ARPA come with guidelines or like a template for how to determine if an expense is a COVID-related expense?
So in the discussions I've had with the finance team, there is no such firm guidance about what specific connections have to be made. It seems that it, the guidelines that I have received are that it must be connected to the COVID nineteen recovery. That's not really, but it's not defined, in other words, the guidance that you've seen. Okay.
Nope.
I would say, as things like this start to get spent in the coming years, through ARPA, we may see more guidance come out once they start seeing things submitted to them. Ultimately, for, you know, the tracking of the use of the funds, we may get further guidance.
Are there requirements that, and I cut you off, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Are there requirements to, you know, track or report out on how it's spent and will it be audited?
Yes. I don't, my understanding is that may occur at the end of the funding period, but I don't know...
The reporting piece?
Yeah. I don't know what that timeline would be for when those are audited by the federal government, when our justifications for the dispersment of those funds are reviewed and how they're analyzed.
How, what's the timeframe for using this money?
So the ARPA funds have to be spent by twenty twenty-six. And that's the whole lump, that's the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And there's not going to be any more in twenty twenty-four?
So what is available in twenty twenty-four is whatever amount is unspent in twenty twenty-three. So it's one lump, it's not... Yep, so twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and twenty twenty-five is the years that we have to allocate that money, that three hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, we don't have to allocate it all in twenty twenty-three.
We don't have to. Nope, it has to be spent by twenty twenty-six. So it can be allocated in the future if we don't receive enough applications this year to justify the full expenditure of that amount. And to your point, like, if we're looking at interior, you know, changing the color palette and stuff, I don't know if that would really rise to the level of a COVID nineteen recovery.
I think that you could, you know, if you're a business owner that's trying to, you could make all kinds of arguments to why this, my business was impacted, this will keep me competitive.
Yes, absolutely. You certainly can, and I think one of the things that we're going to be looking at is like, what are the, you know, the structural changes? So are they introducing a new use, because their current use has been, like retail, has been significantly impacted by online sales or something like that? That's one of the examples that we floated. Are they introducing office space or something else that would really make a long-term financial impact? So I think that's kind of the components that we're looking at, but we haven't established exact guidance about how to review those applications at this time. So for the twenty twenty-three program, previous year grant cycles have had targeted amounts for each, for different project types. You can get up to, you can get eighty percent or fifty percent. I think the eighty percent was a one-time award that you can get eighty percent of your project costs covered. For the twenty twenty-three program, because we have so many funds and to the two different funding streams, we were looking at up to eighty percent total project costs, not just as a one-time allowance. And then the final award amount is actually determined by staff and H P B, so that they can apply for each project up to eighty percent, but that isn't necessarily guaranteed that that's what they'll get. That staff and H P B would determine how much of the existing funds is appropriate to spend on that project. To accompany the rollout of the program, once the actual program guidelines have been established, we'll be engaging in some targeted outreach, so we'll do, we'll mail out the brochure to all of the property owners and tenants. We're going to do virtual information sessions, and then I'm going to go business-to-business and speak to people individually. And then we also have email blasts that we are going to be sending out to make sure that people are aware of the funding opportunities. That tentative timeline that we're looking at is for the tier-one, that the applications open in mid-March. The application closes in mid-June, and then we would come to you at the July meeting to discuss the final awards. Granted, do that tier-one program. And then the tier-two applications would open at the beginning of March, and they would be reviewed on a rolling basis. We're thinking right now that they would be reviewed by staff on a monthly basis, so that's when they would be awarded. The next steps are staff will update the brochure, as well as our grant page, our grant webpage, to reflect any additional changes that have been decided, kind of through the guidance and consultation with H P B. And then we'll send out the updated website and brochure to H P B members once they've been finalized. And a note about the brochure is that I am by no means a designer, and so we have a design department here, the city of Littleton, and they're actually going to be creating the brochure once the program, once the kind of content has been established. They're actually going to be refining it and beautifying it. So what you see before you is a very, very rough draft that was really intended to give, to communicate the content of the program.
Understood, yeah.
So with that, are there any additional questions you guys have or any additional comments that you'd like to make about the program? Any direction that you'd like to see it go?
I just have one before we begin to clarify this money. So the ARPA money applies to the entire downtown, not just...
Not just historic preservation or the historic district?
The entire downtown, the entire new D B A, right?
So I think this is something that, over the past couple of weeks, my understanding of this has evolved. When I was originally learning about this program, it was my understanding that the ARPA funds were going to be used to supplement the historic district fund, which would only fund the downtown historic district. In my conversations with our finance team and our city manager's office, it isn't, the direction we've received is that the ARPA funds, that wasn't part of the agreement that we had with the federal government, but that is how we want to spend the money, at least for twenty twenty-three, if not for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, keeping it within the boundaries of the historic district.
So that can possibly change?
That can, that can possibly change, but that's what we're looking at for now, is that keeping this and then the hundred and fifty thousand from the City of Littleton funds within the historic district.
And then, so we have a hundred and fifty thousand, so next year, how much money will the city obligate to the historic fund?
My understanding at this point is a hundred thousand dollars, which, from what I understand, was the level of funding before COVID nineteen began. That was the annual normal level of funding. So twenty twenty-three represents a return back to that full funding amount, and will continue with that in twenty twenty-four, as well as any unspent ARPA funds will also be rolled over into the twenty twenty-four program.
I think the old program was only fifty thousand.
Was it? Okay, someone had told me that it was a hundred thousand, so that's good to know.
We just didn't spend it.
Okay.
We ramped that up.
Okay, we have, okay.
And that's, I think, a really important point, because one of the things that we said when we created the district, when we designated the district, we said it and council said it several times. A lot of the property owners were very concerned that, what does this mean for me owning this property? This is going to be more expensive and all of this, and we, we heard them and really made a commitment to beef up those funds. And so it's good, good that we have.
So for the next few years, we'll have done that.
Because they, when the district was created, they weren't able to take the property tax deduction that anyone outside the district could take, a little fifty percent. So that money was given there to kind of offset some of that.
Yeah, and just, and also support them, and because some of them really felt that this is, this is a real infringement upon me in what I'm trying to do. So that was important, and it is, you know, it's a commitment that we made, that I feel that the city made and that the board expressed an interest in making sure that those funds were more robust. And I would like to see that, you know, remain long after these, these funds are gone and ARPA is gone. And just remember the commitment that we made.
Yeah, because people, if they plan far enough ahead, could do matching with the state, but that takes the companies. Hopefully, the D B A will have money that they'll be obligated once that gets going, and they all figure out what they want. Okay, I just want to get the clarification of the money types, because if ARPA changes their mind and has to apply the whole downtown, then it changes things a little bit, not so much for our staff, but for you.
At this time, it is, yeah, going to be contained to the downtown historic district boundaries.
I think the goal is to spend it, so if we don't get enough applications, we may open that to a wider area, but hopefully we'll get the applications and be able to use that in the downtown district.
I guess would be, the question would be, could you use someone three fifty for a big preservation project? That's, it's going that direction, it's more the question, does that, does that meet the criteria for doing a restoration on a building? So...
Potentially could.
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a question to be asked, yeah.
So yeah, it's a unique opportunity, and then the, there's another hundred and fifty thousand in ARPA funds to hire a historic architect to help us with some of these projects.
Yeah, who will kind of serve as an aid to applicants in downtown, really focusing on downtown, to help get them and their concepts to a good place to begin the certificate of appropriateness process. So really provide some technical expertise. We have a lot of new developers and new property owners downtown. And so that on-call architect and on-call architecture services are really intended to help provide them with that expertise, which is something that we've noticed has been a gap with so many new property owners and developers downtown.
I know it's a gap, because I filled out a role just volunteering over the last thirty years with downtown, because they don't understand. But that hasn't gone. Do you have to move forward on that, hiring it?
We're working on that, but have not had any contracts signed yet or anything like that. Properties that are forty years old, at least, does the, could the city itself apply? I mean, like, if it were, let's make this up, like, if it were a parking, a park structure or something like that, or something that belongs to the city. I think we used ARPA funds to do the chamber, and we did, we're using ARPA funds now, so. I think this is mainly intended, though, for private, you know, this, this section of it is really...
To support business.
Yeah.
And one of the things that we have talked about many times is, one of the things that is, is needed with these old structures and is expensive to do is maintenance. So maintenance is not as sexy as preservation projects, but it's absolutely necessary.
A procedural question about the tier-two designation and how, how the board will know what's, what activity is going on in tier-two? I'm wondering, is there an alternative, or, I don't mean to like open a can of worms, but could the board be involved somehow? Would it be appropriate for the board to be involved, like, through an email vote? Is that even something that, okay, we wouldn't go there. Is there a reporting, I told you.
Yeah, you don't get an English ask, right?
Yeah. Is there, could we set up some kind of a process to notify the board? Because I'm curious to know, like, what's, what's coming through, what's bubbling through?
Yeah.
Could that be included?
We can send out our monthly email reports or do some, or even in a meeting, just report out to us.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Because, you know, that's going to be ticking away at the money, and I would, I want, I'm curious, I want to know.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. We would definitely keep you guys appraised if any tier-two awards.
Well, let's talk about procedural stuff, if anybody has any other procedural questions. I'm a little concerned about, one, mixing the two programs together in one application. And the reason for that is, the ARPA fund will disappear, but the preservation fund's going to continue forever and ever. And we're training people to think in terms of preservation language for future projects. And hopefully, there'll be more money in the future that would come to the downtown district. But if we mix them up, landowners or property owners might get confused between the two, particularly since the interior stuff would not come to us. I wouldn't mind it, and I don't want it to come to us. But we don't want to know what's going on in interiors, because we have concerns about historic fabric, and we're not supposed to stress that. So, I mean, bringing, knowing about those things just raises our blood pressure, and we don't need that. So my concern is combining the two programs into one application. And I think it would be better if they were clarified, there were different approaches. So that, in three years from now, when people are applying for a historic fund, they've been seeing the same language for three years, because they're probably thinking about it, and they just haven't done it. And so all the preservation language is always in the document.
Okay.
Does that, do others have that concern as well?
I did not have that concern, but when you mentioned it, Rick, I'm thinking about, just on my HOA, you know, people are still using the architectural committee form from, you know, nineteen ninety-eight. So, yeah, I mean, that's, that's really true.
And see, in the last, the previous application, we did talk about very specific historic fabric stuff, which isn't in here. And that would be, the project would have a significant positive visual impact on historic character. Project includes restoration of architectural details, materials, historic facade. And the project would provide permanent rather than removable elements. We don't have to hit the examples, but those are really geared towards the building itself and the preservation of the building. And that language was put in here, and was kind of removed. So that just causes some concern for me when we're reviewing stuff, and then when ARPA ends. I mean, if everybody applies for ARPA, it could end next year, right? It can go that fast. Now, I don't think it will, but it could go that fast. Three fifty is not a lot of money if someone's trying to do something. So that's my main concern about, procedurally, about having them combine it to one document.
Okay.
Is that kind of generally held?
I hear what you're saying, Rick, and I, like, Kim, I had not thought about that, but you're talking about it, I'm like, oh, you have, you're right. At the same time, we've got this pot of money, and I wouldn't want to artificially separate out amounts of money from one thing versus another.
Well, we aren't, because we only see the one fifty side, we're not going to see the ARPA side, unless it involves bigger projects.
Yeah.
Right now, it's not set up that way.
At this time, we haven't allocated specific amounts to the tier-one and tier-two funding. The idea is that there would be these, this is some totals, hundred, five hundred thousand, and we would be applying them to the tier-one and tier-two projects as appropriate.
Yeah, and we don't know what they will be yet.
Yes, absolutely.
See what comes in.
Yeah, and what kind of scale and scope those projects would be. Thinking through that, though, I do think it makes it harder to, like, forecast the amount of funding available in the historic preservation. So there are two components that I've been thinking of. One is that because we don't have that separation between the two, we need every application to conclude a justification for COVID nineteen recovery. Even if it's purely historic preservation, we at least need them on the application to justify their request with a COVID nineteen recovery impact, with the potential that it could be funded through ARPA funds. Additionally, we have, it's hard to forecast what future funding years can have, because we're not sure exactly what tier-one and tier-two projects will be funded through that ARPA pool, which is something, yeah, that I think we're still working through on our end.
In some ways, there's more urgency to spend the hundred and fifty thousand, you know, that's that...
Wait for this year.
For this year, to make sure that gets done.
Yeah.
Right.
And because we'll...
The money will still be there next year if it doesn't get spent.
It's not always given, but that would roll over, this is a special year, so...
I thought it kind of was, because it used to be that, you know, it was use it or lose it. And I thought, it was my understanding that that changed a few years ago, where we were rolling out of the pandemic. It was before the pandemic.
The communication I've received from finance regarding rollover funds is that state funds were unspent in twenty twenty-three. There was a potential that they would get rolled over, but it wouldn't be until twenty twenty-four that they would get rolled over. And it would only be after a review by finance to determine if the funds are being spent appropriately. I'm not entirely sure what they would base their analysis on. So the fact that they were able to be rolled over to twenty twenty-three, my understanding was an exception that they made due to staffing changes that affected the grant program. an exception that they made due to staffing changes that affected the grant program.
Well, this was the city money.
Yes, yep, that's city money.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, I, I mean, that, that was my recollection, but, you know.
Yeah, that it would be rolled over, because that was the promise to the downtown district when it was created. It takes a while to develop these projects, so they, I mean, right now, it's gonna be three months. So someone might be thinking about it, once they get into it, realize I can't get cost estimates and all that in the next three months. So I think I might wait till next year and get a little bit better cost estimate. The other thing is that when people start finding out that these projects are here, learn how to apply, because we have a ninety-six, about eighty-six buildings downtown. So not all of them are gonna need the money, but majority of them could use the money. It may take a couple of years to start developing projects and then maybe start thinking in terms of the future for where that money would be. And preservation projects are expensive. If you're gonna do historic windows, like I think a one building has really old windows, it might be two thousand dollars a window to repair those windows. So.
So I think to, to Rick's point about just timing, one of the things that we experienced, you know, back in the before times, with the grant program, was that it was taking an inordinate amount of time, even before COVID, to get estimates, because you are looking at a relatively small set of, of contractors.
That's a great point.
That, that do this kind of work. And, you know, there, there were first folks that just could not get those estimates or could not get scheduled, so that they, they couldn't, you know, complete.
They wouldn't meet the deadline.
Yeah, they couldn't, couldn't even turn in their plans early enough. And, and just this discussion just kind of reminded me of that. That was a problem that we ran into consistently.
Well, with Playable, nobody applied that year, we gave them all the money. They probably should have gotten all the money.
Well, there, there was another project also, wasn't there?
I think that was the only one that year, was, was no one applied, maybe it didn't come through, but maybe a graffiti removal.
Yeah, we had graffiti, I think there were two applicants and then graffiti removal, and we funded everybody and, you know.
And Playable got a lot.
Well, the thing with Playable was she didn't apply for the full amount of her project. And we said, hey, why not cover the full amount?
So that's something to keep in mind.
So maybe this timeline is a little ambitious, the application period being from mid-March to mid-June?
No, I think that timeline is fine, but I think for a beginning program, it might cause problems for people. They have to start learning when to apply. They need to be thinking ahead a year or two. This is my project architect thing. Thinking ahead a year or two that they wanna get the money and be in place to go for it.
Just bearing in mind, there, there could very well be more the following, the following year.
Could be more, yeah.
Sure.
So.
I would expect so, yeah.
Some of the outreach efforts, we're, we're hoping will address some of this, or, or try to.
For simple projects, I think for painting and stuff, maybe some repainting, but for a window repair, it's still a different package, most likely.
Okay.
That, I mean, all this fits into how you structure your application.
So if we split them into two separate funding, into two separate grant applications, an ARPA fund and then a, which is specifically related to COVID-nineteen recovery, and then this historic preservation, City of Littleton Fund, which is really focused on historic preservation. What is the comfort of creating some flexibility with the ARPA funds? That they don't have to be, are we, would it still, interior improvements and similar projects more comfortable in, in a separate ARPA fund program?
Can I, can I just throw in, you know, I, I, I totally am sensitive to what you're saying, that we don't wanna train people forever to assume they can apply for funds that may not be there in the future. But I love the concept where a college says, just fill out one application and we'll apply them to any of our scholarships, and we, the experts, will say.
The discerning of what goes in.
Because it's such an arduous task to have somebody fill out the same data on two different applications with sections that are actually different. It'd be better to, just my thought, it'd be better to have one application with sections that can be applied for, for different programs.
So just like spitballing, perhaps it could operate something like there's one common application for historic district grants, and then on the staff side, we can direct them to a historic district fund. Or potentially, maybe it's something like the City of Littleton Funds all go to this tier two and then the, sorry, this tier one, and then ARPA money can go to these. Yeah, tier one or tier two, and kind of.
Yeah, I mean.
Something, something, something like that.
And you don't, you don't have to.
One common application and then like, on the backend, yes.
I agree, Jason, what I'm looking at, though, that's all behind the scenes, but see, it's this document here should be livable for several years, so that some, you write it in a way where the ARPA stuff can just be easily just taken off all the other language, those basic things. How you administer it behind that is different, but what, because they're gonna apply, but this is what they're gonna be reading to know where the money should go. And so if it's gonna end up being primarily for the historic district, we should have historic preservation language in there, so that we're training people what preservation, restoration, rehab is, and that's how it's being applied to their building.
And then like, the ARPA language just as like a supplement of like more flexible opportunities are available on a limited time basis through an ARPA grant program, or?
Well, you'd have to kind of figure that out, but I, I guess I would lay, lay the brochure out where the ARPA stuff could be just removed when the program's gone. And then everything else stays the same, you fill it in on the picture or something.
So the eligible costs would be grouped into, to historical preservation in one chunk, and then the next section of bullets is more the ARPA.
Right, so that it's kind of clear. So I think tier one and tier two on this brochure might be confusing people a little bit. I don't, I don't know. If I were applying for it, I would think, well, which one do I wanna apply for? And there's different criteria, and one's a federal program, boy, I'm nervous about those programs. And we got the city program, I mean, there's all these things that can fit into that.
And we've always come in front of you each year to talk about the grant program and how to, you know, that we kind of develop the brochure each year, roughly. But this is a unique circumstance, you know, for the next few years, we've got different.
Yeah, criteria.
Different abilities with the ARPA fund, so, I, yeah, I, you know, let's take that under consideration and see. I appreciate the comment of, okay, let's make this easy for the applicants.
Yeah, I do too, that's, that's the money comment.
Exactly, right, yeah, the less complexity, certainly on the applicant side, but the less complexity, the better all around.
Okay, okay.
And at the end of the day, this, I don't think this has to be an evergreen brochure, because when the ARPA money's gone, you're gonna need a new brochure.
Right.
So, and at that point, you know, you're gonna do a new, new brochure.
Well, there's a lot of words on here, making sure that the right words are on there, that are preservation oriented, not building oriented.
So if that's the, the driving factor, then, then, then let's, let's write copy to address that, rather than try to.
I don't wanna separate the programs, I mean, who knows what could happen with those? I mean, the government might see a few applications from somewhere else and then all of a sudden put out these very strict guidelines.
That's a good point.
Who knows what will happen here? I mean, it's a ton of money that's nationally.
That's true.
So.
So one thing that I wanted to get a sense of is, like, the comfort with the board of, of being a little bit more flexible with the ARPA funds, rather than like the strict, more strict preservation kind of guidelines that the City of Littleton Funds have operated with previously. And I think it kind of speaks to that point of when the historic preservation district was created, helping property owners and tenants to see like the economic benefits with that, of, of being in the historic district. Is that something like, I, I do think the city has a desire to support property owners and tenants within the historic district with things like, you know, significant interior improvements, with maintenance projects, which, things which might have fallen out of the scope of previous historic preservation grant cycles, something that we do have a desire to, to fund more of in this project. And is that something that the board is, is largely comfortable with? If, if we kind of keep it contained to that ARPA limited time funding?
I mean, I think we could follow any guidance, where would the power come from? Is it just granted us by the council or, or, because obviously we have, we have the, the power, for want of a better word, to administer things according to, you know, various historic preservation rules, and that's in our charter. But this would be new, you know, but we could do anything with guidance, I would think.
And the guidance I've gotten from finance is pretty open and flexible, you know? It really is like kind of to be a, I've had meetings before, it's like, you know, tell me what it has to be, and they're like, related to COVID-nineteen recovery, you know? So it, it's been pretty open-ended, is the conversations that I've had, the direction I've gotten from, from the city, so.
But there's a little bit of a conflict with the way the money is, would be done. We have to follow our code.
Yes.
And our code has very specific guidelines.
Yes.
That we have to follow, regardless of where the money comes from, it doesn't matter. I mean, come from the Defense Department, they still have to meet the Secretary of Interior standards, right? They have to meet the downtown design standards, which were developed, they have to meet the window guidelines, you have to meet all that stuff. So that's, that's a little different issue. We'll take all the money that they can get. When it comes interiors, our code says we don't deal with interiors. But people are welcome to preserve their interiors, and I guess they could come to us if they wanted to, because if they go for tax credits, interiors become part of the tax credit program, in which we did review some interiors just recently, right? So as far as getting people more into preservation, it's educating the property owners of all the benefits that are out there, all the tax benefits. And there's a lot of them, one that we haven't used in Littleton that is very available, is selling the easement of your facade as a tax benefit. I mean, there's a program out there where people will buy your facade and give you the money, because they can write it off on their taxes. And that's something that you can learn about at CPI conferences, a gal that will talk about that. But those are, there, there's a lot of those different kind of programs that benefit preservation in the big picture that were developed because preservation costs a little bit more in terms of building. But as far as how the money, ARPA money's spent, I don't think that makes any difference to us, as long as we're following the requirements of the code.
Yeah, so in terms of the actual construction work that's done, in terms of the actual facade improvements, all of that would still need a certificate of appropriateness. None of this would supersede those requirements of the code to receive a certificate of appropriateness, to follow the Secretary of Interior standards, to meet building code, to appear in front of the historical preservation board if it's a major alteration. And none of that would supersede or, or in any way impact that regulatory framework. I think it's just a matter of, my understanding is that the code, the historic preservation grants in previous cycles were really geared towards those projects, in particular those projects that were major changes to the facade, to the exterior of a building. And, and now that we have this additional flexibility, now that we're coming out of a pretty unprecedented time, I think the city also sees a value to the vitality of the historic preservation, of, of the Littleton Downtown Historic District to kind of look at some more flexible opportunities for funding those businesses that are currently kind of keeping those historic buildings afloat, you know, kind of keeping it an active vital use in them.
As long as flexibility doesn't become that slippery slope, because, you know, our standards, they don't change.
Yes.
And, and so in, in that regard, no, there is no flexibility. It is the code, it is the standards.
Yep.
So I, I don't really know what, what flexibility would be, so.
There could be a solely interior project that's funded by the ARPA funds that you may not see. You know, you, you wouldn't necessarily wanna see it, because it's solely interior. But as Amy was saying, we'll report back to you on those and let you know what, you know, what funds are being spent from, from those ARPA funds. But yeah, you, you may not see those pieces, whereas you will see the tier ones that need particularly a COA.
Yeah.
Particularly a, a, a major COA, or, you know, the minors, you may not see either, because they, they could be done by staff, right?
And I'm definitely not suggesting any flexibility in terms of our regulations. I guess the flexibility I'm referring to is funding things that weren't previously funded in previous cycles of the grant program.
Can you give an example?
So my understanding is, no interior improvements were previously funded in previous grant cycles. So no interior projects could apply for this fund, whereas now we're suggesting that some could.
But out of the ARPA, not.
Out of the ARPA, yes.
It's always, that's fine.
Out of the ARPA.
Yep.
And like I said, as long as, I, I presume exactly what goes on now would go on then, which is that you guys would say, okay, this would probably be able to apply to this fund mechanism, here are the rules, we think it, we think the rules apply here, do you agree? You know, that kind of guidance, I, I think, I don't see why not, you know?
Okay.
I mean, just for a little history, the preservation fund began with the Second Century Fund in nineteen ninety, when there was nothing going on downtown, and Mike Massey said, we need to help downtown. But there was no mechanism for Littleton to get any money from the state, because we didn't have a preservation board at that time, it's part of the museum. So the money came through the Second Century Fund, and they awarded the money to, to the city to give to the applicants. And that started all this stuff a long time ago. And so trying to tie, taking advantage of historic, historic fund money as well, it's a lot of coordination that is required to leverage all these monies. So it's just a program, it's just developing the program and getting it moving. We're just gonna see the end product after you. I mean, as far as interiors, my caution would be, we have a lot of old interiors. I think most people understand that that's a very draw to the public. We have a few buildings that have been gutted, some don't have decent interiors, but people like going into, like the Littleton, that little store. The general store, yeah, they took the plaster off the walls, I can't stand doing that, exposing it.
Do they still have the ceiling?
But you walk, you're walking into an old building, it's not a brand new space inside. Like, like the Abbey, the Abbey, the alley, it's where basically it's a brand new. But that's something that you have to, the staff has to talk through.
Okay, and certainly something that can be part of our analysis, that we can incorporate into our own standards for reviewing these, these applications, which are reviewed on a, an administrative basis.
Yeah, economic development. You wanna have the buildings being used, but it, there's potential that someone could do a change to a building that hurts its value, doesn't help its value, because they don't understand how preservation ties all this together. There was a, a question on the word enlargements, which meant widening of a door. I don't like that word.
Okay.
I mean, I didn't know what it meant when I saw it.
To comply with building and safety, like an ADA with door.
Just say ADA.
Yeah.
And that becomes an issue anyway, I mean, largely. Accessibility is an issue, it's a hard issue to deal with.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and it's a battle between the codes and the buildings and everything else.
I didn't catch that, that's a good catch.
Then I, I had a question on percentages of work, we had the percentages just before. So I know you don't, and here it said that they would apply, and then the preservation board and staff could review the size of the amount of money that an applicant would get. I see a real problem with that, because you're planning a project that costs X, and you're expecting to get X, and then you go, well, the city and the board, and you didn't fly. Um so what I would recommend, we still have percentages in there and let people apply for a percentage. So that at least there's some boundary that the board and the staff can use where this person's coming from. Then you can work with the applicants and whether they're trying to take advantage of the fund. Or if you think the fund should be spread out amongst more projects, depending on what's coming in. But let them apply for a percentage. That can always be increased. At least they know what money they're dealing with. Because they apply for a project that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we give them forty thousand. They may not do the project.
Well, are you, are you saying that if they apply for X percentage, um it's either give them that or nothing?
No, if they, I I it's either if we have no percentage, it's give them that or nothing. But if you provide percentages, at least it gives them some parameters where they can put their money or allocate their money.
Cause that we've, we have not done that in the past as far as, you know, when you had several projects that came forth.
Well, before it said, you know, we'd fund up to twenty five percent of the roof work. So if someone has a hundred thousand dollar roof project, we'd fund to give them twenty five thousand or it's fifty thousand, fifty percent of the other work. So they knew that they were going to get fifty percent of a project.
No, up to.
Up, up to, right.
And that doesn't mean fifty percent of the project. It means up to.
But right now there is no up to. It's a hundred percent or we don't know what we would give them.
Up to eighty percent.
If I were an applicant, I mean, I'm thinking if I have a project and I've got three hundred thousand dollars of work and. I'm gonna go after the fund for a hundred thousand of it and make my budget, get everything in place, and then the board gives me fifty thousand. Now I'm fifty thousand short of my project. Where do I come up with the money?
Because you didn't read the words up to.
I think the applicant needs to know that they they can't go in knowing it's gonna be cut. I think it's too risky that their project could be reduced in scope.
We've always done that to some degree.
So you don't know how many people are gonna apply.
No. Now, if you're the, if it's you guys that are making that decision, we just agree with it. We could add to it, but I don't think the board should be in a position of cutting a project. I think it looks bad. It's bad optics for a board to do that, especially if they start getting a lot of projects.
But in the past, we've had, you know, seven projects come in and they all apply for up to. And that's a bigger pot.
And then we make the.
So do we kick out total projects or do we say, well, instead of, you know, eighty percent of the project? You know, there's enough money to do fifty percent of the project.
They might have to reduce the scale, but that's.
Yeah, we're not telling them what to do.
Well.
You can get this much money.
Reducing the scale, that's the concern I have. I don't want the board to have to get in a situation with reducing this. Or they're gonna ask us, well, what do you want us to cut out of the project if you're gonna cut twenty five?
That's up to them. I mean, they'll just have to fund it differently.
They don't, you know, they wouldn't ask us that. I mean, that's not a question they'd ask them.
Yeah. I mean, this is a supplement.
Yeah.
In most cases.
Well, I know it is. Well, may not, maybe not.
Not all.
No, some people don't wanna spend a dime. They won't have the government pay for everything. And I know some people are gonna apply for those kind of projects.
The reality is, you know, it is up to X amount of dollars and you need to figure out how that works in your budget.
Okay.
And right now we've got it as up to eighty percent of a project for this, for this unique time. Which is, you know, a twenty percent matching fund at the very minimum for a a project. But yeah, it it may be that we get many different projects applying.
Right.
And and, you know, you're gonna have to put in, or the property owner's gonna have to put in more than twenty percent.
I don't think, I, me personally, I I I don't find that confusing. If I know, if I know my project is gonna cost a million dollars. And I'm gonna do my best with the city and I'm gonna find out afterwards how much money I'm gonna have to go after elsewhere is. I, it's just.
Yeah, that's how a lot of grants are.
Kind of feel like that's.
Well, and you're right, because we have very little money. In the whole scale of a preservation project, this is nickels and dimes.
People are used to fifty thousand.
Yeah, and and they've, I I can't think of ever, eh eh, you know, it's never been a problem in the past.
But I, but I do agree with you that it's awkward. Ideally, um it would, it would be weird using our, I mean, I don't have the expertise to look at something and go. Um I think that should be just thirty thousand and not forty thousand. I I could never do that in a million years. But um to look at something and go, well, we don't have forty thousand, but we do have thirty, that's easy enough. That's just a matter of allocation.
Well, the smart person has a hundred percent.
There are none of those here.
Then they apply for a grant and it just reduces their project. That's really the smart.
Yeah.
But we can't tell people how to apply.
For all we know, some people are in that.
All right, so I'll take that back. We don't need to worry about percentage. We just stick with the percent max.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
That's always been the difficulty of that grant, difficulty of that grant allocation. You've got, you know, several good applications and only so much money.
I know, it hurts your heart, right?
You're still giving out money, which is great.
Yeah.
Uh I wish we could fund them all to that percentage, but you know, you you have to sometimes spread the wealth.
Yeah.
Can't love everything you signed up for.
Tough, yeah.
Well, we just want the project, the program to be successful, and if it's successful, we may get more money put into it.
That's right.
So I mean, there's potential for future monies with what the city has done, so.
Yeah, this will be a a key few years to uh see what projects could be done in the in the historic district. Really exciting.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
Did you get all the information you need?
I believe so. So to recap, um.
Good luck.
Yeah, it sounds like potentially moving away a little bit from this tier one, tier two component and like the public facing side. Maintain the ability for some applications to be administratively approved. Those urgent requests, the maintenance requests, the ADA accessibility requests, that don't need a COA. And then the interior improvements related to COVID nineteen recovery. Um and then keep the funding amounts separate. So the hundred fifty thousand dollars of City of Littleton funds is really. Focused on historic preservation projects, um whereas the ARPA funds have that additional. From interior improvements are really geared towards COVID nineteen recovery from businesses. One application and then on the backside, staff kind of directs that one application into those two separate processes. Um we'll have a monthly report out to all of those approved administratively um to the historical preservation board. And then um we'll proceed with like the rough timeline of mid March to mid June for our application period. Um trying to shoot for the July uh H P B meeting to bring those um applications to you guys. Does that sound like a fair summary?
I also picked up the note.
Pretty awesome recap.
That's amazing.
The uh enlargement language?
Yes, well, yeah, and I have some notes about stuff to remove um the. Add in back that historic preservation specific language, remove the enlargement language. Um there's some other notes that I have just about moving solar panel uh. Skylights into the eligible costs.
Historic skylight.
Historic skylights, okay, into that eligible cost and. Um and then is everyone comfortable with like if it doesn't need a COA? Um like if it's window repairing of historic window and it meets our qualifications in that major minor alterations chart? Doesn't need a COA of, just kind of considering that maintenance?
Yes, that's what we agreed to when we did the window guidelines in our COA uh chart.
Okay.
And it's up to you if they are not meeting those guidelines, which are pretty strict.
Yes.
Then you bring it to us.
Got it.
But yes, we want it as much on a staff level as possible.
Sounds good.
Fun stuff.
Well, hopefully it'll be a fun year.
On the timeline, this year we're doing March to June. I would suggest we try to move it up to the winter. So people have the whole summer to do work.
Okay.
You mean like February?
Yeah, or even earlier, because.
So we do the.
Award a project in July, they may not get to it in time to do the work. So you want free the summer up.
I never thought of that.
So fortunately, what what our timeline for the City of Littleton funds is that we have to have them awarded by the end of this year. And the funds have to be spent by the end of twenty twenty four.
Oh, that's.
What's the city budget calendar? Is it a year, a year?
Yep, so they have until twenty twenty four to spend the funds and then if there are exceptional circumstances, they may be able to get extensions on that. Um so it it could work out that they get the award this year and then they can do the work and actually expend those funds next year. We just have to get them allocated in our system through, my understanding is like a purchase order by the end of this year. And then the same with the ARPA funds, they have to be all in allocated via purchase orders by the end of twenty twenty five. And then all the funds actually spent by the end of twenty twenty six, or they disappear.
I understand how all that works.
Okay.
If we move the application period up to the beginning of the year, like around January, that gives them four or five more months and a two year. Basically a two year requirement to get the project.
Yeah, okay, and that's definitely.
Same.
Okay.
But for the, for the future.
Not gonna happen this year.
No, it's not gonna happen this year. We missed last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's always a concern. And and when, when do we know how much money we would have in the fund as far as? I'm talking about in in future years, um as as far as when does the city allocate that money in the budget?
So I think it's yearly. That's a part of the budget allocation and and I think there's been a commitment to the the hundred thousand. You know, to up up that uh historic preservation fund to a hundred thousand.
So do you go into Jan one saying, okay?
Yep.
All right, so we we should be ready to roll and I I think as far as finding contractors. I mean, you can't find any contractors. I mean, I mean, you've got to, boy, way, way, way down. So if we could in future years um be ready to roll the the grant program out in January.
That's a good question. We'll have to talk with finance. You bring up some great points about finance and budgeting. And would we be ready to roll it out in January knowing that? All right, the budget is approved in October typically and then it becomes effective in January. We're gonna make sure we're not jumping the gun.
Do my plan and do, do all of my materials so that Jan one I can start handing out.
Open the applications at least in January.
Yeah.
Or even maybe.
Something about the fifty thousand rolled over from twenty twenty three isn't available until March.
But if we don't award them until later.
Yeah.
We just open it earlier.
Yeah.
No, it's the application period, not the awarding period.
Exactly, yeah.
We can, let's, let's look into that. I think it's, yeah, great suggestion. Let's make sure there's no, uh we're not uh promising anything that uh causes is problematic for another department.
Then you've got sixty days to write this application, which is already pretty difficult, so, you know.
I mean, it could be possible you can move it up this year. If we get twenty applications, can only fund like five of them. Now you got projects sitting there. You could just say, okay, we're gonna reopen the applications again next October. That gives them time to get, open in October, due in February. So that goes across the fiscal year. You you don't know how much money the council gives you, but at least they're getting their paperwork through, because.
We were gonna do that last year.
Yeah, we did.
Well, it, you know, and then we ran into the budgeting. It it turned out to be a little bit of a. Situation gone bad, really. But I, not that, oh, the funds rolled over, so it's fine, but uh we just couldn't organize it.
Well, there are other funds too, because economic development had this little pot there given the preservation. It couldn't get spent. I think that's where the fifty, maybe the fifty thousand came from was from, I don't know.
Well, we didn't.
I was working on something before I got on the board even, with Adler money that was there.
Yeah, we didn't do the grant program last year. It's one of the fifty thousand rolled over.
In the past, we had two application periods. Uh because in some, sometime we wouldn't have enough applic- eh, you know, applicants to even use our pot of fifty thousand dollars. So there was the first one and then it was reopened um to spent.
For any remaining money.
Yeah.
I forgot that.
Yeah.
We're gonna beat the bushes.
Yeah.
Get those applications.
Sounds good.
Okay, any more comments from anybody?
Oh, no.
I think it is good. I think you summarized it really well.
Yeah, really well.
Yeah, this was a good discussion.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you guys very much for coming down and thank you very much for your guidance on this matter. Much appreciated.
You have a lot of opinions.
That one's good.
I've definitely been in uncharted waters, so very much appreciated.
You're a fast learner. We already know that.
It's fun to watch you pitch a lot. Thank you.
Okay. Um I just have a couple things. The deadline for the CPI. Applications, if you remember, is, oh, we're past it. Was it like? But where are we, where are we on the CPI?
Uh we, so we did get the uh four uh positions. Uh I believe Denise is working on getting folks registered. And we did get uh some grant money through the the grant program.
So who are the four?
Oh, gosh, you sent me the email. Let's see if I can find it.
Was it, was it that?
I thought it was.
Amy, me, Chris, and Jason, did you want to go? I didn't hear that from you. Oh, yeah, Jason said yes. So Amy, me.
Yep.
And Jason.
Yep.
And Laura couldn't go. She wanted to, but she couldn't go. And Paige is gonna be gone.
And Chris is gonna be able to go on her own, I think.
Yeah, she, she, does she talk to you? Cause she can go for fifty dollars. She wanted to see.
Right, yeah, and I think we can cover that. We can help that out as well, so.
Now, one of the problems with the city, last year, we paid and we got reimbursed. When you fill out the application, you have to tell CPI what classes, what event you want to attend. So I don't know how that's going to work.
Yeah.
It's more for their information though, right?
Well, yeah, but you wanna know what you're gonna attend to, right?
But they did that last year and, you know, I mean, you just, I filled out all.
Yeah, like any conference.
Oh, but we just reimbursed the amount and we got a check from the city to pay. I paid, we paid ourselves and the city just reimbursed it.
So is this something we need to be doing? Do we need to be filling out the application?
I'll check with Denise and see.
You wanna go online and, yeah, see, I don't think you, uh I was looking at it. Um when you go to register. Um they want you to, you read the whole event and then you state which sessions you wanna go to.
Yeah, I saw the agenda and, but if you would be so kind as to just advise me what to do and.
Okay, and I will do it there. Yep.
Yeah.
And I'll find out.
You can see all the, um, if you go to the CPI website, you can see the talks, so I would get it, get an idea which.
Oh, yeah, no, I already started looking at that, yes.
You know, as far as signing up and saying, I want to do this talk at this time, it doesn't matter.
You can change.
I literally signed up for every talk and it was fun.
And then how about the hotel? Are we gonna be able to stay up there in the hotel or what?
There's, there's, there's funding for the hotels, so.
We should time make a reservation.
Yep, that's right.
So we need to make our own.
Well, no, I I think uh typically, uh we've got an administrative staff that will will help with that. So I'll make sure they get.
I'm not trying to push things onto you, but yeah, just let me know.
No, no, yeah, well, no, I, that's what we would expect is that the administrative staff would kind of help book everything.
That's cool.
Do the registration, so.
No, my, my son lives in Boulder, so I'll just stay with him.
Nice.
Chris was looking for a hotel room.
Oh, yeah, all right, okay. Uh one other thing, um. On the website, when I looked at the documents, the very first report nineteen ninety seven is not up.
Okay.
So if you can't, if you lost it, I have it, since I downloaded from the website anyway.
You said the, the survey?
The first survey.
Yeah.
Because all the other surveys are based off of that very first survey.
Okay.
So if you can't find it, scout, just let me know and I'll send you the document back.
Okay.
It was there originally, so I don't know what happened in that transfer.
Rick, do you know if Chris has a hotel room for Boulder?
I don't think she remembered what she told me.
Yeah, she sent us an email.
Yeah, she, I think she. Her company should pay for some stuff.
Right.
We all just like to try to save the city as much money as possible, which makes things complicated for you though.
Now, that's what we wanna do too. That's important.
Good for everybody.
Yep. I'll, I'll have uh either Denise or Lori follow up.
Okay.
With the, with, actually the five of you, including Chris, to make sure we're, we're covering what we can.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll let you know what you need to do if anything.
Okay, no problem.
You guys are gonna have fun. This is great.
I expect, I expect to learn a lot.
It's a good sessions. The one on the tax credits is a, there's one to uh attend, so you learn what those things are. It's gonna be a good one. All right. Anything else from the board? All right, I will. Call the meeting to adjournment at seven thirty-eight.